Good evening and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for March 24th, 2015. We're glad you're here. Before we call the meeting officially to order, we will have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to our country's flag presented tonight. The invocation will be presented by Mike Cronin, who is chaplain with the Cobb County Police Department and associate pastor, East West Church on Hurt Road in Marietta. That'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance, which will be a duel between the Girl Scout Troop, number 2308, from Mayleton.
I got cookies.
Yeah, we're cool. And these are the PAC 417 from Rocky Mountain Elementary. We're glad you're here.
Yay.
So the way this works...
District 3.
From District 3. The way this works, you're gonna take your time and do the invocation, as you always do so well. Thank you. And then we're gonna have the pledge of allegiance. It's gonna be led by these two fine groups of young folks. After we have the pledge of allegiance, the Board of Commissioners will need to go down so we can have a group picture first with the Boy Scouts, then with the Girl Scouts, then with the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts together, okay? Just kidding. We'll do the first two, not the last one. So those who wish to, please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Please join me in prayer if you would. Almighty God, we come before you this evening as we begin these proceedings. Father, thankful for the opportunity that we live in a place where we have a voice and we have an opportunity to discuss. Father, I bring before you now this commission and these citizens, and I ask, Lord, that everything that's discussed and debated and decided upon tonight would be such that you are honored and that the county and the citizens of Cobb are well-served. So, Lord, we bring this meeting before you, asking for your guidance and your wisdom. These things I ask in Jesus' name, and I thank you, Lord, that you hear us when we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cronin, thank you, sir. Appreciate you. We're gonna go around front.
Ladies, why don't you come up here first and stand in front of us, okay? Come over here. Stand in front of us. I'll lead you to that fourth.
Cookie Monster.
Thank you, ladies. Can we understand you have a kid?
We got one more. Okay, we have another kid, sir?
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. I love you.
What are you, the Girl Scouts? You're doing good job, girl. Good job.
All right. Hi, guys.
You guys want to...
I'm down.
Tell him to get down.
I'm lower.
No, not you. You can tell.
All right, fellas, right here.
It's my spot.
Is this the lunch in here?
There you go.
I got cookies, that's all.
Everybody got it?
Got it.
Good job.
Good job.
I'd like to call this meeting to order of March 24th, 2015. I'd also like to recognize Chairman Randy Scamahorn and School Board Member David Chastain and School Board Member David Banks who are with us tonight. Thank you, guys. We appreciate you being with us. Tab 1 and 2 were covered earlier in our work session. For those that may be interested in what those presentations were, they'll be on-demand and on-live in the next 48 hours on the website. You can review it there. And so we move to Tab 3, Presentations. Tab 1, or Item 1, the We the High School Boys are not here yet. Yes, they are here. Come on forward, guys. Commissioner Rodd.
And if the School Board members want to come up also? And no, I am not short. They're just really tall.
You want a stool?
You're short.
Hey, I brought a step stool in case I needed it.
They are really tall.
Hey, guys.
He's not up for the car heels.
All right, let's see. Where's Chase, the Assistant Principal? You're supposed to be up here. Oh, there he is. All right, you're... He's like me. You can't see him when you stand next to him. You guys didn't bring cookies? And we want to see you bring a trophy back, okay? All right, so these guys right here are part of the Wheeler High School basketball team who won their sixth boys' state championship over Pebblebrook High School. What was kinda neat about that was both schools, Cobb County schools, like I said, this is the first all-Cobb boys' state championship since 1986. They had a season of 30 wins and just two losses. And anybody that paid attention to the game, a little bit of excitement at the end of this game? This game was with a free throw at the end. They won the Class 6A title. The Wheeler Wildcats have improved each of the past three seasons, advancing to the semifinals in 2013 and the finals in 2014. From here, the top eight ranked teams in the country, Wheeler being one of them, have been invited to participate in the Dick Sportinggood High School National Tournament, which is April 2nd through the 4th up in New York City. With a lot of support from the community, the team recently earned approval to represent Cobb County at the national tournament. So we congratulate the Wheeler Wildcats, the coaches, the parents, the students, and wish them continued success as they travel to New York City to compete in the national championship tournament. I have a proclamation here. I'm not gonna read it. You guys can read it later. It's got a lot of words. Basically, it just congratulates you for your win and talks about some of the stuff I just talked about, and it's signed by all the commissioners. And with me is Assistant Principal Chase Strumpel, and you know the School Board members, and then Coach Douglas. I'm gonna let you...
Oh, yeah, this was a pretty historic event. Unfortunately, a Cobb County team had to lose. I guess the last time, like you said, was '86, and that was Wills versus Sprayberry. We got some Sprayberry people in the house tonight. It was, I mean, a historic season. I mean, it's... These guys... We went to the state championship last year and lost to Tift County. And I think the difference between last year's team and this year's team is the chemistry that these boys had together. They really played for each other and put it all out on the court. It was an amazing season. Our student section is incredible. They feel like they're legitimately part of the team. These guys really treat them that way, and it was a special moment all the way to the end, so it was pretty cool. We're very honored and looking forward to representing Cobb County and Georgia in New York City.
Thank you. Coach?
Thank you very much for allowing us to come. We're very honored to represent Cobb County and the state of Georgia. Our other kids are with one of our other players, our other seniors, senior, because he's being named Mr. Georgia Basketball, so he had to go to another situation, another event. So we're very proud of him as well, and we just wanna say thank you.
I'm gonna introduce the player.
Shambari Phillips, Bilal Abdurrahim, Hakeem Akrom, Doug Lipscomb.
We needed you guys back in 1975.
That's when David Chastain was at We the...
Guys, we gotta move on, Randy. Thank you. Is he really... Don't go anywhere.
Don't go anywhere, Randy and David and David.
Sorry. Item 2 is recognize Sprayberry Football Program for a special recognition.
Could I have Frank and Lynn Wiggington, Dee Martin, Lori, Coach Shackelford, I know you're here, and John Kelly, our principal? Is there anybody else from Sprayberry that would like to come up? Oh, hey. Hey, Wanda.
I sent through two kids.
Okay. Well, we're here tonight to recognize Sprayberry's football program under the leadership of Coach Billy Shackelford. And we have with us our principal, John Kelly, the voice of the Yellow Jackets for how many years?
At least 10.
10 years. Frank Wiggington and his lovely bride Lynn. We have Dee Martin, who's on the committee, and Lori and David Chastain, School Board member for Sprayberry, David Banks and our Chair of the School Board, Randy Scamahorn, and we have Wanda Patterson.
John Jerkle.
John...
Jerkle.
Jerkle. Okay. These folks were part of a committee at Sprayberry for the football program, and they were big supporters, raised a lot of money, and paid off the debt associated with the fieldhouse. This accomplishment relieves the football program of a burden and allows it to move forward. We are extremely proud of the Sprayberry Football Program for its responsible physical actions. So they really deserve a big round of applause for this. And the only other thing I would like to say is we really miss tonight not having Sprayberry's finest couple, Coach Jim Frazier and his lovely wife, Wilma. Isn't that Jim? Mrs. Coach. So I hope they're watching at home tonight, but they couldn't make it. But we really wanted to honor them and recognize them as well, so let's have a picture. First, you wanna tell us about...
Yes, the... I'll tell you real quick. I'll make this quick, Tim. This...
I find it hard to believe.
This Sprayberry... Sprayberry Fieldhouse was a beautiful thing when it happened, and revenue streams changed, as you know, and it became very oppressive for the students and their parents to pay this off. So with the leadership of Coach Jim Frazier, whose stadium bears his name, put this group together, and I think every person, to a person here, would say that Coach Frazier and Mrs. Frazier deserve about 99.9, if not 100% of the credit for this, and we love them and we miss them and wish they were here, and we're just so proud of this community.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything, Coach?
I will.
Real quick? Uh-oh.
I just wanna reiterate what Frank said. We've got a great group of people here that added their expertise, their skills. Eight years ago, I was named the head coach, and one of the first people I ever sat down with was Frank, and he gave me the news that we owed over $300,000 on a fieldhouse. So that was an extreme financial burden, and about five years ago, we were sitting around a table trying to strategize a plan on how to pay this thing off, and it just shows that a lot of hard work, a lot of prayers, and, you know, a good team of folks can get a lot accomplished. So we're extremely excited about it for our kids. We can invest in our kids, invest back into our facilities, upgrades, and I think it's a great thing for not only the football team, but the athletic team, but Sprayberry community in general.
And it takes teamwork and a lot of good sponsorships and partnerships.
Absolutely.
Okay. See, they should be the model for how to get rid of debt in the school board system. I'm teasing.
I don't believe we have any debt, do you? No.
Me?
Coach.
I was gonna grab the mic.
Item 4 to present two certificates to Kaylee Shaw and Kaylee...
Khalil.
Khalil and Khalil. They're both...
Good evening. Yes, if we can have our honorees come up, Khalil Shaw, Khalil Carter, and anyone who's here in support of you, particularly your parents, if you're here, your coaches, I would encourage you to come up. We also have some members of our school board who will have... Stay up here. Say, we know team sports is a family affair. A lot of people have had to sacrifice for this, so encourage you to come on up.
Okay. Are you... Which... And your family behind you. I'm down. 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 I guess it is March Madness.
In continuation of us honoring stellar athletes who are here in Cobb County, I have the privilege of honoring two from South Cobb High School. Is that South Cobb? Oh, here we go. We have our Principal Ashley Hosey here. Great. I have the honor to recognize two stellar athletes from South Cobb who have had remarkable accomplishments over the fall, and I said Khalil and Khalil. They're not related, but if you wanna be a stellar athlete, maybe that, you know, you might wanna consider naming yourself Khalil. We have with us Khalil Shaw for being named an All-Cobb County Scholar-Athlete and Khalil Carter for being selected as the Cobb County Touchdown Player of the Year. I will first recognize Khalil Carter. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you on being honored as the Cobb County Touchdown Club Player of the Year. As Senior Quarterback of the South Cobb High School Football Team, you passed for 2,700 yards and 25 touchdowns while rushing for an additional 1,345 yards and 21 touchdowns. You have also been recognized as the Region 3 AAAA-AAA Player of the Year and selected First Team All-State in Class AAAA-AAA. A lot of As.
6A, Commissioner.
6A. There you go. I didn't wanna...
6A. Good to see you.
Even greater than your athletic ability is your dedication to being a team player and honoring others. We are proud of all your accomplishments thus far and wish you the best as you graduate and continue your academic and athletic career at North Carolina A&amp;T. So, yes. Mr. Khalil Carter? Yes, this is for you. And if you can introduce who was here with you today?
Oh, I have my mom, Donna Carter, my dad, Ken Carter, and my sister Mariah Carter.
Yes, very good. Do you wanna talk a little about your season?
Oh, Coach Rans is a great guy. Make sure everybody got playing time. And our season wasn't too good, but me and Shaw had a great season. I had a great season, so I can't complain.
So you stood out despite the season. Great. And thank you for introducing your family from someone who's a mom of two little boys and have started to get involved in their extracurriculars. This is a family affair, and I recognize the sacrifice that you've had to make for your child, so appreciate that. This next award is for Khalil Shaw. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you on being honored as an All-Cobb County Scholar-Athlete. As a senior at South Cobb High School, you have achieved a 4.3 GPA while starring as wide receiver and cornerback on the football team. You have also been honored as the Georgia Lottery Scholar-Athlete and selected as a Fall Sports Academic All-Star by the magazine, The Scholar Jock. Excelling both in your advanced placement classes and on the field, you epitomize what it means to be a student-athlete and exemplify the discipline and hard work necessary to excel academically and athletically. We are extremely proud of you and all your accomplishments thus far, and we wish you the best at Davidson College and in your future aspirations to be an orthopedic surgeon. Yes. Congratulations. Go ahead and introduce your family, talk about your career.
Okay. I have my dad, Lamar Shaw, my mom, Nisa Backus, my grandmother Paulette Backus, my grandfather, Kevin Shaw, my cousin Miles Backus, my uncle Paul, Paul Backus, and my auntie Shamella Backus.
All right, very good. Thank you. And again, appreciate the sacrifices you've made. Now, Principal Ashley Hosey, you have the honor of having two of these students at your school. Do you wanna talk a little bit about your relationship with the students?
Okay. Briefly. As a principal, I'm very proud when students are able to accomplish things, but as you said, Mr. Cupid, it's a family affair to get these young men to this age and at this point. We're very proud of them, and we're proud of them as being role models, and we're gonna miss them in our school when they graduate next year.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll all line up as best as we can for a picture. Sister, are you sure you don't wanna come on in? You sure? Okay.
Okay. There we go. Thank you. Congratulations again. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Thank you for coming again. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
On behalf of the Cobb County Management Team, Mr. Steve McCullers, Mr. Hankerson, and the Board of Commissioners, if you'd come forward for that presentation.
Each year, the Cobb County Management Team selects an individual to honor for displaying leadership, exceptional leadership and teamwork while performing their normal duties. This selection is made by secret ballot without influence from the Board of Commissioners or anyone else. It's really who we feel deserves the honor. Here tonight to announce the winner of the award, the Silver Eagle Award for 2015, along with Fatah Massimo and Helen Poyer, two previous winners of the award. As you've heard many times, Cobb County's a little bit different from most other places, most other counties, most other governments. In Cobb County, when you hear the phrase, "We're from Internal Audit and we're here to help," it's not a punchline. It really is a fact in Cobb County. The winner of this year's Silver Eagle Award for 2014 is Ms. Latona Thomas, Director of Internal Audit for Cobb County. Congratulations, Latona. While she's making her way up, let me read from one of the nominations, and we have Latona's family following her up. Husband Brian, son Brian, and daughter Brianna.
Yeah, the Wheeler guys.
So if I may, from one of the nominations for Latona, Internal Audit has the challenging task of providing independent, objective analysis and insight designed to add value and improve county operations. Ms. Thomas's leadership brings a systematic, disciplined approach to evaluate and improve the effectiveness of risk management, internal control, and the governance process. This may involve dealing with difficult management, political, and even personnel issues. Her ethics are unimpeachable in these situations, and she often diffuses tense moments, clarifies murky waters, and is rigorous in the evaluations undertaken by her office. There is no doubt that she has saved resources, eliminated risk, and contributed to an improvement in county operations. Very pleased to announce Ms. Latona Thomas as one of the 2014 Silver Eagle Award.
Thank you, guys, so much. I really appreciate it. You know, when we do our jobs, I know sometimes it's difficult to come in and audit you guys, and I believe it was someone in 800 megahertz, Tracy Roberts, said, you know, it's one thing to hear that your baby's ugly, but it's Internal Audit always finds a way to do it with a smile so that you don't feel so bad. So thank you for this award. I really appreciate it. I wanna say thank you to our staff. I couldn't do it without the staff of Internal Audit. They're very passionate about what they do. I'm using it out of loss of words. Thank you for all the department heads here and those that voted. I really appreciate it. We do what we do because we love it. To the Board of Commissioners, thank you, guys, for your guidance, County Manager for your confidence. So, and I guess I'll introduce these guys who I left about an hour and a half ago, and they didn't look like this. So, everybody was just coming from school and work, so this is my husband, Brian, of 17 years, who I love dearly, my son, Brian II, who really doesn't like a lot of public And this is my daughter, Brianna, who loves... She's our entertainer in the family, so she loves being wherever a camera is. So thank you, guys, so much. I really appreciate this.
Congratulations. Good job. Thank you. Good to see you, sir. Good to see you. Congratulations. Bye.
Congratulations. Well deserved. The next item, number six, is to present a certificate of recognition to Mr... They told me how to say your name before you got here, and I forgot. Come on up here. Tumler. Simple as that, right? Glad you're here. You gonna bring your dad or anybody up here? Come on up. Come on, please, please. So, we had the little Cub Scouts. This is what they grow up into, V. So, do you go by Frederick or Fred?
Frederick.
Frederick. Frederick Tumler is First Eagle of this class of 2015 for Troop 1776 and is the 142nd Eagle out of that troop, which is out of St. Anne's, correct? Frederick began his scouting career as a Tiger in PAC 121 where he earned the Arrow of Light. He crossed over into the troop in 2009 and advanced through the ranks, earning 36 merit badges along his trail to Eagle. He has 66 nights of camping and is an ordeal member of the Arrow Order of the Arrow. He attended NYLT training and served the troop in leadership as a patrol leader, scribe, quartermaster, OA troop rep, and assistant senior patrol leader. He is a senior at Wheeler High School Magnet Program, and we'd like for you to introduce your dad, and to tell us a little bit about your Eagle project, if you would.
This is my dad, Steve Tumler. So my Eagle Scout project was at Kennesaw Mountain. I built a couple of wooden foot bridges on a new trail. It took about 50 hours...
So, that concludes our presentations for the evening and takes us to Tab Four, a update surrounding SunTrust Park by the County Manager, Mr. Hankerson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. I'm gonna ask some of my support to come forward and join me, and at the end of my presentation, if you have any questions, I'm gonna direct it towards them. I'm gonna ask Mr. Glenn Jardine, Senior Vice President of HIRI, and John Palmer, come forward, and Steve McCullers. Where's Steve? Is he still here? And it's my backup. Starting out, I'm gonna show you a couple of photos of the current state of the stadium site, SunTrust Park, as of March 6, 2015, so we'll start showing you some of those. So, there's a lot of activity, a lot of things happening on this site, and so you're gonna start seeing a lot of vertical activity as we go forward. Next slide. So, we got another one there. Okay? Work orders have been issued for over half of the stadium construction project. Over 60% of support footings for the stadium have now been placed. Expect footings to be completed in April. Final grade of ball field at 960 MSL has now been reached. Blasting will begin again in the next few weeks, with blasting occurring outside the main complex area. The pumps for the detention have been installed and testing is ongoing on that as well. The second tower crane has been installed and walking show steel movement along at a steady pace. Developers hired two, hired full-time security guards to oversee who comes in and out of the project and out of the gates. Now, Gate 1 and 2 are where the guard shacks are located, and they are maintaining security on this site after some recent activities there. Monday, March 16, the Georgia Supreme Court was held, the city of Atlanta's plan to finance the new 1.4 billion fund on the stadium, allowing the city to move forward with the issuance of the 200 million in bonds towards the project. The court upheld at Fulton Superior Court Judge's decision last May to validate the bonds backed by hotel motel taxes. We are waiting on a similar type decision of upholding the Cobb Superior Court Judge's decision to validate the bond for us to move forward with the issuance of bond for SunTrust Park. Spending to date, 20.4 million, 212 to HIRI, and 20.2 million to American Builders. On March 5, our DPS staff and fire police and the sheriff office and the Braves met at Avalon Development, similar to the planned development around the stadium in Alpharetta, to see how they provide security on a daily basis and during large events. And speaking with Director Hayden, who's been a part of all of those meetings, he was very impressed with their approach and may have even changed some of their line of thinking or approach. On March 10, DPS, IS, and Braves met with Cisco about security cameras and systems used to protect development areas. With that, that is a quick update, and if you have any specific questions about the current status or anything about the stadium construction, I will attempt to, along with the team here, any questions you may have, or if you have any questions of the team on how things are going. But according to them, things are going extremely well.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? My understanding that we're way north of 50% of spending has been done directed towards Cobb-based companies, so that's a good thing, too. So, not only are they spending a lot of money, they're spending a lot of money in Cobb, which is perfect, and excited about it continuing to come out of the ground. If you look at that photo you have there, David, or go to the second photo, that one, the next one. So, just about where that little red crane is over on the left by that retaining wall...
Yes, sir.
That's about where home plate is for the folks that are trying to get oriented in that particular area there, so it's taken shape, and all we need is a winning team, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen, for being with us tonight. Thanks, Steve.
See you. About an early in the morning.
So, Tab Five takes us to Transportation Agency. We have three items. Director Massimo.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, County Manager. Our first public hearing item tonight is to conduct a public hearing prior to expending more than $100,000 for Department of Transportation Program Management Services to include the 2016 SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program, Limited General Engineering Services, Individual Major Infrastructure Projects as Necessary, and Airport Programs. On February 24, 2015, the Board of Commissioners authorized advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing for engineering design services for Program Management Services. The Board also authorized issuance of a request for proposal to secure the engineering design services. The scope of work for this Program Management Services contract will include Program Management Assistance, Pre-Construction Services, Right-of-Way Services, and Construction Management Services. Management Services will also include Limited General Engineering Services, Major Infrastructure Projects that may develop over the term of the 2016 Management Contract as Necessary, and Airport Programs. We request that the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more for Department of Transportation Program Management Services, including the 2016 SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program, Limited General Engineering Services, Individual Major Infrastructure Projects as Necessary, and Airport Programs.
Thank you, Director. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing for this item and this item only. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
My name is Craig Harfoot. Good evening, Commission Chairman and Commissioners. I know we've done this many, many times, and there's lots and lots of money being spent for engineering. The only thing I would like to see is that you do it in-house. You do the same thing these guys are doing on the outside and eating up all the money. They're hiring tech students, tech graduates, and, you know, I think if we're gonna spend that kind of money, we could create jobs in Cobb County instead of giving it away to these outside entities that are huge. And I don't think it would cost so much money. I think you'd save money in the long run, and you just gotta hire... I mean, you brag on your staff. I mean, evidently, you can hire right people to do the same thing, and I think we would save money. And you only need to use, you know, contract with engineers as you need them. I'm talking about, there's always a person that's running the show and eating up all the profits. It's not all paid in salaries. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers like to speak on this item? Saying here none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you. Item Two, please.
To conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to secure engineering design services for Wendy Ridge Parkway Bridge pedestrian improvements. On February 24, 2015, the Board of Commissioners authorized advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing for engineering design services for Wendy Ridge Parkway Bridge pedestrian improvements. On February 24, 2015, the Board of Commissioners authorized advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing for engineering design services for Wendy Ridge Parkway Bridge pedestrian improvements. The Board also authorized issuance of a request for proposals to secure the engineering design services. We request that the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to secure engineering design services for Wendy Ridge Parkway Bridge pedestrian improvements. On February 24, 2015, the Board of Commissioners authorized advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing for engineering design services for Wendy Ridge Parkway Bridge pedestrian improvements. The Board also authorized issuance of a request for proposals to secure the engineering design services. We request that the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to secure engineering design services for Wendy Ridge Parkway Bridge pedestrian improvements. On February 24, 2015, the Board of Commissioners authorized advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing for engineering design services for Wendy Ridge Parkway Bridge pedestrian improvements. The Board also authorized issuance of a request for proposals to secure the engineering design services. We request that the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to secure engineering design services for Wendy Ridge Parkway Bridge pedestrian improvements.
Thank you. We'll open up the public hearing for this item and this item only. Everybody wishing to speak, please come forward at this time.
Now, this bridge, I'm Craig Harfoot again, Mr. Chairman. This bridge is a very expensive bridge, and from the parameters I was given, we're gonna spend a lot of money, and yet, like I said, in-house, you could narrow this thing down and do this a very more cost-effective way. I mean, we did spend lots of money on transportation study corridors for rapid bus thing, and never happened. That's just wasted money. We don't need to waste money in Cobb County. Please, I would say, hire a lead engineer. When they built the Hoover Dam, there was one guy who was a genius, and they had all these other people working under him. That's basically what I'm saying. And a salary genius is cheaper than hundreds of thousands of dollars for this project, that project, this project, and we're not building the Hoover Dam.
Any other speakers? Saying here none, the public hearing is closed. Item Three, please.
To conduct a public hearing for the transit-related Title VI program and required transit policies for Cobb Community Transit. Title VI of the 1964 Civil Rights Act and related statutes and regulations provide that no person in the United States shall, on the grounds of race, color, sex, national origin, disability, or age, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefit of, or be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal aid. Cobb Community Transit, CCT, is a recipient of Federal Transit Administration, FTA, funding assistance through an annual formula allocation, as well as through various discretionary and competitive funding programs. FTA requires that all direct and primary recipients document their compliance with the U.S. Department of Transportation's Transit Related Title VI Regulations by submitting a Title VI program once every three years or otherwise as directed by FTA. The Department will also present an agenda item to the Board concurrent with this public hearing item. It's on consent, requesting adoption of a resolution to approve the Transit Related Title VI program and required transit policies, providing no comments are received at this public hearing to be incorporated into the Transit Related Title VI program and/or required transit policies. Once approved, the Transit Related Title VI program and required transit policies will be submitted to the FTA. We request that the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for the Transit Related Title VI program and required transit policies for Cobb Community Transit.
Thank you, Director. At this time, we'll open a public hearing for this item. Anybody wishing to speak, for or against us, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Craig Harfoot. I understand about Title VI in that the feds, if they give you money, you gotta jump through all these hoops. I would question why you would take the federal money. Federal money isn't gonna be there forever, and you gotta be able to... You gotta be cost-effective. You gotta get the most money for your dollar. I mean, it goes to any function. If very few people use something, you don't spend a fortune on it for just a couple people to use it. Meaning, that would go for a road, a sidewalk. You wouldn't build a six-lane highway for 20 cars to drive on. That's what I'm talking about. So, this always looking for federal money has gotten you into a bigger can of worms here, I believe, and I would hold this one. I would look into it further because you don't know how much it's gonna cost you in the end.
Any other speakers? Saying here none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Director. Takes us to Tab Six, our first public comment period.
The first speaker is Carter Chapman. If you please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for making Cobb County such a great place in which to live and work. My name is Carter Chapman. I am a member of the Cobb County Airport McCollum Field Airport Advisory Board. I am Commissioner Weatherford's District One appointee. Thank you, Commissioner Weatherford, for allowing me to serve our county. I've had the privilege to watch our airport grow and support our county as a member of the Board for the last eight years. Currently, our airport activity supports 842 community jobs with $112 million in annual economic impact for our county. Eight years ago, our runway was lengthened, widened, and strengthened. We now have the longest general aviation runway in the metro Atlanta area. This month, we opened our new control tower. Its predecessor in front of it was completed in 1992, when our airport housed one turbine aircraft and 35 propeller planes. Now, we have over 30 turbine aircraft, which are international range capable, and 300 total aircraft based at our airport. With 200 landings and takeoffs per day, we are the fourth busiest airport in the state of Georgia. This summer, our new customs inspection facility will open. Its $800,000 cost and $120,000 annual operating expenses are funded by the fixed base operator and its users, not our tax dollars. This customs facility turns our airport into a true international airport. Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Airport Advisory Board, I would like to propose that we add one word to the name of our airport to reflect its new capabilities. We need to add the word "international" and rename our airport the Cobb County International Airport McCollum Field. The airport name will be the same, but only the word "international" will be added to describe our new updated service that will soon be available. The addition of the word "international" will immediately convey to the pilots and customers that U.S. Customs Inspection Services are available. Additionally, the word "international" is typically associated with a very well-equipped airport. This is an opportune time as well to coordinate with the state of Georgia as they update the new signs on I-75 for the express lanes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would appreciate your vote to make the name change effective when Customs Inspection Services begins in three months. We're planning it for June 22. Thank you for your valuable time this evening.
Thank you for being here, sir. We appreciate your service.
Sir.
Any other speakers?
Yes. The next speaker is Robert Burke. If you would please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Robert Burke, and I'm here to recommend the Moratorium on the Continuing Care Retirement Community, or CCRC zoning ordinance. I have researched CCRCs extensively, and there are many admirable features of CCRCs. However, the existing Cobb County CCRC ordinance is badly broken. First is the notion that CCRC is density-neutral. However, density is mentioned in the CCRC code when it talks about contiguous residentially-zoned property which is less dense. This implies that we must know the density of a CCRC proposal, which leads to the second issue. The CCRC code allows floodplain and wetland acreage in the density calculation, which is different than all other zoning codes recommended for residential land uses. This is the difference between density and net density. Density is simply total units divided by total acreage, whereas net density is total units divided by the acreage, which is not floodplains or wetlands. Net density is the better measure, since floodplain and wetlands cannot be built upon. The original Isaacson living proposal was for 987 units on 53.7 acres, of which 7.5 acres is floodplain. This gives a net density of over 21 units per acre. The Hidden Hollow subdivision directly to the south has a density of 1.77 units per acre, or less than 1/12 the density of the first proposal. That density, plus massive buildings four stories tall and a quarter mile long, over a fully exposed parking deck, was the community's first exposure to a CCRC proposal. The applicant must have believed this was allowable under the code, which points to the code being badly broken. The CCRC code should not be one-size-fits-all. It needs to have different net density requirements for different land uses. For low-density residential, it should be no more than five units per acre, just like non-supportive RSL or residential senior living. Also, a CCRC in LDR or VDR should be restricted to no more than two stories of height. It is a fact that seniors have less impact on resources than other demographics, but they do not have zero impact, and when densities get too high, the low impact of seniors is negated by too many units in one place. Also, as densities get too high, the architectural style of senior housing changes to apartment-like buildings, and that may clash with single-family homes. The concept of CCRC at home should also be considered. This is where seniors remain in their homes for the independent living phase. They pay into the CCRC club, and they get visitations at their homes from CCRC staff. When they need assisted or nursing care, they move to the CCRC site... they move to the CCRC site, which can be much smaller than a traditional CCRC because it only has assisted and nursing units. This is similar to Cobb's current supportive RSL code, which is allowed in CACs and RACs. Cobb's senior living ordinances should serve the needs of seniors while protecting neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is David Bergenbine. Please come forward.
Morning, or morning. I've been up here three times.
We're glad you're here.
Finally got the right meeting. Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, and County Manager. I come, was here on medical burn bans. And Commissioner Cupid gave me an update tonight that it's still in the process. I passed out some information to show how many burn bans we do have in Cobb County. And we have fifteen in South Cobb. It's, I asked the public commissioner, I believe he is, oh... Oh, give me a hand. Hern.
He.
He. If I was the only one basically complaining or whining, and he said, "No." When, I was already in a burn ban in two thousand twelve. But I didn't get my thousand feet. And the ones that were outside the burn ban that were in my subdivisions, I left alone until I got my burn ban. And then, we proceeded to, proceeded to go ahead and extinguish those fires of burning leaves and everything. And again, I say, there wasn't nothing on the form, when I filled it out, that stated that the fire pits and the chimneys on the outside and the burn pans, or whatever you wanna call them, as long as you burn clean wood, is okay. I passed out some information on EPAs on wood burning on the outside and what they produce in the air, and how it affects the people, like my wife, that has COPD and has been intubated in 2010. And the effects of it, and how sensitive they are to it. We had an incident this weekend, Saturday. I did call the fire department. But when they come out, they don't put it out, because they say it's legal. So, you get frustrated. And, you know, you kinda don't know where to turn. It's nice, the man has a right to burn clean wood. But that clean wood is not clean. It puts out particle contaminants that are as small as a red blood cell, however small that is. I have no idea, I'm not a doctor. But it's pretty small. I cannot open my garage doors and work on my classic cars because I don't know when they're gonna light up. Like I say, they're two hundred foot away. And now, I'm gonna control my anger because my wife's in the hospital. And been there four days. We're still fighting this again. Loaded down with antibiotics, loaded down with fluids, going through the kidneys again. And his right to burn should not affect life. It's got to stop. It really has to stop. I talked to Mr. Eaton and gave him the full story of my statements made to the Fire Marshal, and then to the Assistant Fire Marshal, Stephen Mintz. And then they talked with Randy Crowder. And I told him, I said, "It was fluff. A whole month, I had fluff. That's all I had. There was no resolution. It was, 'Oh, well, I got ten thousand people that think they have a right to burn.' That's fine. But you issued me a medical burn ban." It even says in, in the guidelines and stuff to where you can put that fire out if you want to. But you don't choose to because you wanna play both sides of the law. You wanna give them the right to burn. But as you're doing that, the people that have legitimate medical problems, you are jeopardizing them. And again, my wife's in room 593, Cobb General. You can call up and check on her.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Vicki Plunkett. Please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, Cobb County Civic Council recommends that Cobb need not expensively luxuriate an existing transit route at taxpayers' expense.
Ms. Plunkett, I'm gonna need you to provide your name for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Vicki Plunkett, President of the Cobb County Civic Coalition. If Cobb County is going to provide transit service, Cobb's objective should be to provide good transit service for transit riders at a reasonable cost to taxpayers. Cobb already provides transit on Cobb Parkway. The only transportation benefit of the proposed BRT on Cobb Parkway is that it will provide a faster trip time than the existing bus service on Cobb Parkway. The proposed new route, 10X bus route, following a very similar route, will also provide a considerably faster trip time at a tiny fraction of cost to initiate and a tiny fraction of the cost to operate and maintain compared to BRT. Access to and usefulness of the 10X should be maximized by including stops at the Georgia State Marta Station, Midtown Marta Station, Cumberland and Marietta Transfer Stations, and the Braves Stadium. Unlike BRT, the 10X will not block left turns into and out of businesses along Cobb Parkway. BRT would adversely impact these businesses and their customers, and the 10X would not have these adverse impacts. The CCC recommends move Cobb Connect BRT from the medium-term list to the long-term list in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Instruct Cobb DOT to stop all work, including planning, funding, et cetera, on Cobb Connect BRT until such time that the Board of Commissioners votes to instruct staff to resume work on this project. Move towards, move forward with the most cost-effective 10X and not the BRT. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Craig Harfoot. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Craig Harfoot, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the bonds that are being issued to Home Depot. Couple hundred million over some time. It's like the Braves bonds. Apparently, the Development Authority has this right to issue these bonds, and then you guys are supposed to just rubber-stamp them. It's what my commissioner told me, that you don't have much say over what they do. Well, tonight, I wanna talk about Home Depot's business model, and I wanna talk about the power behind the throne. It's, Home Depot, I mean, in our last code amendments, you pretty much didn't want any outside storage of anything except laundry that belongs in the yard. Well, over all these years, I've seen Home Depot display whatever they want in their parking lots, and nobody says anything. And we gave them the bonds. And before any of you were there, before, when we had Commissioners before Olens, well, he was a Commissioner, and then we had another Chair. They were actually, I ran into people in Cobb ten, fifteen years ago that were complaining that Cobb County helped take their businesses away and give it to Home Depot. You know, just took their land, condemned it. You know, and there's been this relationship for a while, apparently, for me to be hearing this from people when I was out running for office. And they just wanted to complain to me about what's going on. So, I wanted to just share something about Home Depot. Home Depot has a lot of vendors. They're pretty much the biggest consignment store in the world. You buy something from Home Depot, then they pay the vendor. The vendor comes in and restocks most of the stuff in that store, except some private label stuff. And even the nursery stuff. They don't pay these guys until you buy it. So, I mean, we had a little consignment shop called Olivia Morgan at the end of the street. And people took their stuff and bought a booth. The county was all over them, all the time. Couldn't have a tent in the parking lot. Couldn't have outside sale. Couldn't have, meanwhile, Home Depot's got tents and rugs, and you name it. And what makes me concerned is, they're big. I know we want them to stay, but there, there seems to be this relationship that we don't see or understand. And anyhow, we shouldn't sacrifice small-business people for a big one. They shouldn't have your ear and nobody else does. And when it comes to the board members, you know, appointing these board, you know, you all have to appoint the board members. And when I ran for office, this was what I was thinking. The hardest part of my job will be, who do I place on these boards? Because they, they basically are the power behind the throne. And when I looked at disclosure forms, they usually were chairing campaign committees and this, that, and the other, and they ended up on these boards. Well, certain ones are more important than others because of the impact they have on community and how they target other businesses they don't like. And I'm talking about this tonight because most people don't understand politics. They don't understand anything. And I think we need to know going into this next election cycle, 'cause you put the same people back on. And I know some of you are new to the board, and you get in there, and it's like, like, "Well, he's been on it. Just keep him on it." And I commend the Commissioner in South Cobb because she opened it up. She took applications. I mean, that is a step forward. I don't know much more than that about the process, but the, but this Cobb Development Authority, if you can't really remove these people for issuing bonds to people, something's wrong. You know, and you're not picking the right people because it's just, it's just money that you're giving away from the county coffers. And I, and I got a question, and you guys can answer it yourselves and find it out, but if Cobb, if they're not paying for this inventory that's on their shelves, do they get any inventory tax assessed to them? Or are they avoiding that by doing what they do? And I think your tax assessor will all look into that. And thank you very much.
Thank you. The final speaker is Mac Parnell. If you please come forward.
Well, it's a pleasure to address you today. I know each of you personally. It's been a pleasure to get to know you as Congressman Lottermilk went through the campaign and is now representing us up in Washington, D.C. Well, good evening, and I just wanna say it's a real honor to address you today on behalf of Congressman Lottermilk. And it's a pleasure for me personally to live in Cobb County. And I got to choose anywhere to live after I graduated from college, and Cobb was right at the top. And I'm proud, proud to call Cobb home. And thank y'all for what you do to make it great. I also wanted to say, earlier you said, you mentioned that a lot of the money for the Braves Stadium was being kept in Cobb. And I was actually at a meeting today, and I heard, I think the number that I heard was eighty-eight percent of the money is being kept in Cobb County. Specifically, an additional eleven percent is being kept in the metro Atlanta area because they couldn't find it in Cobb. And then, so that leaves one percent. And that's just what I heard today. But so that's, that's excellent for the community. I also, I'm just here to bring y'all up to speed and let you know that Congressman Lottermilk is just excited to represent Cobb County. And he's in a unique position in that every single one of the Commissioners, including you, Mr. Chairman, there's a portion of the eleventh congressional district in each of, in each of your districts yourself. And so, we're excited to represent each one of you in, in Washington, D.C. Congressman Lottermilk is on the Committee of Homeland Security and Science-Based Technology. He chairs the Oversight Committee on Science-Based Technology. On April 2nd, we're having an open house for our flagship office in Woodstock, Georgia. And we'd love if the Commissioners and any of the citizens that are here would like to come out. We would greatly appreciate it. That's from one to three. Our, our office, we offer services for people that have issues with the federal government, you know, Social Security, VA, anything like that, Medicare, Medicaid. I know Commissioner, Commissioner Burl, we had a discussion about an individual who had an issue. He was not in our congressional district, but we were able to point him in the correct direction to try to get that addressed. Please sign up for our email updates. We wanna keep y'all informed. And I, I'm here. So if you have any questions for, for me, please feel free to ask them. And like I said, it's an honor to be able to address you today. Thank you so much.
We appreciate you being here very much. That concludes our first public speaking period. It takes us to Tab Seven, our Consent Agenda. Commissioners, I'd like to bring forward a motion that we approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize the execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. As a second in comment of the question, the motion carries five-zero. For those at home, the consent agenda will be itemized following the conclusion of this meeting. Tab Eight, Transportation, directed to Massimo.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners and County Manager, our first item tonight is to adopt a resolution to update the name of Cobb County Airport McCollum Field to Cobb County International Airport McCollum Field. On December 20th, 2011, the Board of Commissioners approved a memorandum of agreement with U.S. Customs Border Protection to provide international customs inspection services at Cobb County Airport McCollum Field Airport. On August 12th, 2014, the Board approved a construction manager risk contract with YLH Construction Company in a total amount not to exceed seven hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred forty-one dollars for construction of a new international customs inspection facility at Cobb County Airport. Construction of the facility is on schedule for completion in May of 2015. Updating the airport's name to Cobb County International Airport McCollum Field would be immediately descriptive of the availability of international customs inspection services at the airport to any pilot or interested party researching airports in the metro Atlanta area. The inclusion of "international" also portrays an immediate image of a full-service airport to potential users nationwide. In addition, updating the airport's name now affords us a timely opportunity to update interstate signage and wayfinding. The effective date of the updated name will be the first day international customs inspection services are provided at the airport by U.S. Customs and Border Protection. We request that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution to update the name of Cobb County Airport McCollum Field to Cobb County International Airport McCollum Field, effective on the first day international customs inspection services are available.
Thank you, Director. This is obviously a wonderful asset for the community, not only the folks that live there and work there and play there, but it's, it's a great magnet for, for economic development as we recruit folks with airfield, or they call them air programs, part of the, part of their corporate makeup. So, this is a great step. We appreciate it. And I know it's in your district. Yes, sir. My department is the liaison.
So you're gonna override me, is that it? Are you gonna say it's your honor to make the motion?
You're the liaison for the airport.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
It's gonna be in your district. So, Commissioner Cupid, would you bring a motion for it?
I'd be delighted.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Oh, yes, so moved.
Thank you. And a second by Commissioner, any comments or questions?
I would just like to say this is very exciting.
Thank you. Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Next item, please.
To approve resurfacing contract 2015-3 local roads north with To approve resurfacing contract 2015-3 Local Roads North with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. for resurfacing of county-maintained streets, project number E9170. Resurfacing is an approved component in the 2011 SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program. And we request that the Board of Commissioners approve resurfacing contract 2015-3 Local Roads North with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $5,082,573.40 for the resurfacing of county-maintained streets, project number E9170.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Oh, really? Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
It says 1, 2, 3, I figured you'd give it to somebody else, but that's okay.
We'll keep talking.
All right, so moved, sir. Thank you.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item 3, please.
To approve a contract with RTC Manufacturing, Inc. for a school zone flasher control system, project number E5010. Advanced Transportation Management Systems, ATMS, is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signal timing, and planning component of the 2011 SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program. The department's ATMS includes a regional transportation management center and a school zone flasher control system. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with RTC Manufacturing, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $296,140 for a school zone flasher control system, project number E5010.
Perfect. I'll bring this forward in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Great work. Tab 9, our second public comment. Tab 10, appointments. Item number 1 has been removed for consideration. Item 2, Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, sir. This is to approve the, I'm sorry, excuse me. To approve the appointment of Bruce Jenkins to the Public Library Board of Trustees. I believe he was going to try to be here tonight, but I do not see him.
He's at the library.
He's at the library. He's also a very good appointee. Thank you, sir.
I'll second the motion. You can't second your own motion. Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Takes us to Tab 11, Public Address. Commissioner Rott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing is, just wanted to announce that an ongoing exhibit at the McFarland Nature Park, Vanishing Axe Trees Under Threat, which is a 17-panel exhibit created by the Morton Arboretum in Listly, Illinois. The exhibit introduces us to the endangered trees of the world and explains how their loss would impact our lives. And the two-talk edition on April is about the McFarland Nature Center, and that's on April 2nd and April 6th at 8 o'clock at night. Also, on April 21st, there will be a town hall informational meeting by the Water Authority and myself at Johnson Ferry Baptist Church at 7:00 PM, and that's to inform the public about an upcoming Water Authority project.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you. I would first like to thank our Community Relations Council and Jackie McMorris and Carol Kemp with the Public Services Agency and staff. Without stealing Commissioner Cupid's thunder, I just want to say what a great event that they hosted last week. And congratulations to all the recipients of the awards in each of the districts. Also, congratulations to all the honorees of the, at the Customer Service Awards brunch this past Friday.
It was groovy, ma'am.
It was a great time celebrating with all of our fine employees and customer service winners. And most recently, congratulations to Latona Thomas for being named the Silver Eagle Award winner tonight. She and her staff do an outstanding job, and we appreciate all that they do. This Thursday, from 4 to 7 at Piedmont Church, the Northeast Cobb Business Association will host its 2015 Business Expo. It is free and open to the public, so please come out and see what's out there in the business world. And then on, also, this Thursday, from 11 to 2, prior to that, at the Switzer Library, the Cobb Public Library System staff will be hosting a job fair from 11 to 2 this Thursday. This Saturday is KSU Game Day. They're going to have a football, a football game, the black and gold scrimmage game for, to get ready for their September opening for football season. And there is road closure that will be in my updates for DOT updates on my, in my newsletter the past couple weeks. But it, the road closure will extend from George Busby Parkway and Busby Drive to the Big Shanty Road and Busby Drive. And it will be closed from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM this Saturday, the 28th. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I wanted to thank the School Board for attending tonight, as well as Congressman Lautermilke's office and Matt Parnell for being here. We appreciate you coming. Wanted to remind everyone that once updates on District 1, we do a newsletter every Friday. Lots of DOT updates. This particular Friday, we're going to be highlighting the major upgrades we did with the GIS, the Graph, Geographical Information System, that is now more user-friendly, tablet-friendly. So I suggest that you read that and try it out, and I think you'll be impressed. Also, the Precinct 5 of the Police Department has been hosting me this week. I've been meeting them, and I want to thank them for allowing me to come by and see them at shift change, as well as was the speaker at the Excel Alumni Group yesterday. And tomorrow, it's the ESP Group, which is the professional executive professional group, and I appreciate that. And most of all, I'd like to thank you for the cookies. Thank you.
Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you. Would like to recognize two people we have in the audience today. We have Suzanne Thomason of the City Council of Astell. Thank you for being here. And also Ms. Trudy Cozy, who used to serve on the City Council. Appreciate your presence. We had a lot of exciting things occur in the district last week, as Commissioner Burrell shared. We had the Creating Community Awards Dinner in the district, and I thank the Public Services Agency and our Community Relations Council for your excellent job in organizing that event. I also want to again thank DOT and the commissioners for your support in launching our new Flex Bus service. We kicked that off last week off of East-West Connector. And I learned just as of yesterday that when the service opened, that there were 75 people who've made reservations to use that service. For those of you who are unaware of what Flex Bus service is, it's an on-demand, door-to-door transit service that is being implemented in areas within South Cobb that lost service during our budget cuts. And it helps to supplement areas that can't be supported by fixed route. And it's been long anticipated and serves three particular flex zones, which is in the Powder Springs area, near the Ron Anderson Center, in the city of Astell, and Mableton off of Veterans Memorial, and also in Marietta off of Powder Springs Road. And we're very excited about this service, and we hope to see it expand, not just in the South Cobb area, but throughout Cobb. And if I'm not remiss, I think this is the first Flex Bus system in Georgia. Yes, yes. And for those of you who are familiar with New Orleans, there's a Little Easy there, and there's also a Flex Bus service in New Orleans. So it's nice to be able to kick off such an initiative here in Cobb. And again, couldn't have done it without the leadership of our Department of Transportation and, and the Board of Commissioners for expanding our options when it comes to transit. Tomorrow, I'll be holding a meeting to discuss zoning in the Smyrna and Mableton area. This is part of a weekly series that I hold with the Planning Commissioner to educate and engage people in planning and zoning within the district. Our meeting tomorrow is from 6 to 7:00 PM and will be held at the South Cobb Community Center. And we will be discussing the Continued Case Z12 for the proposed fee simple townhomes off of South Hurt Road. And we will also be discussing Z86, which wasn't included on the newsletter. And that was for proposed single-family residential off of Old Alabama. Getting to the important things, we will have an extravaganza under the stars, if it wasn't shared, at Jim Miller Park, which will provide young people, all the way from 3 years old to the tween and teen ages, to 11 to 17, who can actually have an Easter egg hunt in the dark. And this will be at Jim Miller Park on the 28th, and encourage you to attend. For additional information, I just encourage you to go to my newsletter, which is online at cobbcounty.org/cupid for more announcements. I do have a couple of things. As the Water Department's liaison, I have the honor of giving a shout-out to Ms. Kathy Nguyen, who has, and her team. Ms. Kathy Nguyen has been named National Partner of the Year for 2014 by Green Plumbers. Green Plumbers is an organization primarily of plumbers that strives to create a more sustainable lifestyle with respect to water resources through education and innovative approaches to traditional plumbing issues. So Kathy, thank you for all of your efforts and for the efforts of your team. Lastly, I have a bit of a public service announcement. I had a unique visit on Sunday night at about 10:00 PM by Cobb County's Fire Station Number 9. I have two children, ages 4 and 6, and my children are battling with allergies as their mother is and wanted to go to bed with peppermints. Well, one of the peppermints didn't stay in one of their mouths, it actually went down their throat. And their mom was frantic and almost ran out the house without even calling 911. And I just knew I wasn't going to lose my child on Sunday night. And I remembered the Heimlich maneuver. And I haven't, can't remember the last time I took a first aid class, but I performed the Heimlich on my child and successfully dislodged a peppermint. This is to share that I, after doing research, that choking and drowning deaths are tied, or excuse me, they're both tied for the number one leading cause of children 14 and under. And you may not think this could happen to you, but it can happen to you. And for those of you parents out there of young children and even tweens, I would encourage you, if you don't know that maneuver or are not educated in first aid, I would encourage you to become such as you can literally save, literally save a life. And again, I'd also like to thank the support of the, of the members of our Fire Department for coming out and checking on us. My son is very upset that mommy almost squeezed the bones out of him, but, but I think when he gets older, he'll be appreciative. So that wraps up my announcements.
Great. Thank you for this. Commissioner, Mr. Hank, say anything further?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioners. We are adjourned.